We'll real quick read our minutes, they're not very long and then we'll get back to visiting with you guys.
Where are you gonna be tanked up for when you're gonna get over there? They'll be bringing more and more coffee and just how big is your bladder?
Well, the good news.
Adam.
Well, I got updates and down dates. Oh, we're on recording. Anyhow, I did updates and down dates.
The commission discussed. I wonder what they discussed?
I'm just trying to read his name from his.
This here?
That's a little better.
How about I give you a card?
That beam better.
What nationality is that, Greg?
Italian.
Italian?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, Gianforte.
Gianforte.
My mother's maiden name was Giannandrea. G-I-A-N-D.
The Gian prefix is very common.
Yeah.
Prefects in Italy.
Yeah.
And then forte, of course, is from, you know, music or something with gusto. With strength, if you play piano or something.
And I'm Mexican, so it's two together. Italian, German, and Mexican, those are my three.
Well, what do you think?
I guess, alright, meanwhile, I was absolutely excited.
Very good, looks good to me, too.
We have a robust G.
I make the motion, then we put the minutes.
Okay, I'll second it. Oh, in favor of approving the minutes as written, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? What did they say when you asked them about that? They have an answer.
They were gonna look into that. They said that's a good, I asked them how they arrived with that.
Yeah.
You know, whether that was the.
That's what Rayvine must've been paying on. But Rayvine probably.
Well, I thought maybe they based it on Plumcricks, you know.
Yeah.
If they could get away with it, I thought they would.
Yeah.
But see, I don't know what raw purchase price, because I think he bought, Rayvine bought something like 450,000, and now they're selling it for 1.4 to the Michigan. Yeah, Greg, I was telling, this is a map of our county. All the green is Forest Service, the white's private, but this private here with this Plumcrick, you can X all this out now because the state Fish, Wildlife and Parks bought over 40,000 acres of this ground to make it be what they call WMA Wildlife Management Area. So it's basically a wilderness. I mean, people can walk in it, but there's no firewood cutting, no commercial hunting allowed, no motorized, it's basically a wilderness. So another skate goat or whatever. So, we were worried about losing our tax revenue. So I guess somebody made the fishing game in 2010. They had to pay, they have to pay us property tax, because I don't know where I can get the money. It seemed like the fishing game buys a lot of land, but we were just talking. They just bought another piece of that private ground there. So basically, it's all locked up now. And it was 320 acres with three cricks running through it. A fish creek, beautiful property, which they said they'll pay $600 a year on it. And we're just thinking, well, that's nice, but what if somebody put a trophy home up there? Or what if somebody added, it could potentially be $3,000 to $6,000 in tax revenue in the future? And so what once was 10% private land is actually less now that we subtract that 40,000 acres. I don't know what the percentage would be, maybe 10 with nobody. So we're just over a barrel with all the green. The Forest Service won't do anything with the woods, except let it burn. And all the white is shrinking. And then what is being purchased by fishing game, they're just wanting it for the typical hikers and. I mean, we don't mind hiking and biking, but we'd like to have a little bit of diversity. I mean, some of those, that Plumcrick land has beautiful roads, I mean, road systems all through it from the 50s and 60s that are on good hard bedrock that hardly need any maintaining, they're self-maintaining. If they would let those be a looped four-wheeler trail, then we could have some diversity. We could have people still doing their hiking where it's quiet. And we could have some four-wheeling right there by the interchange. And maybe they crop up a ATV shop, or maybe they crop up a restaurant, or we need something.
Did you have any dialogue with the state when that purchase was going on?
Yeah, I've gone to all the meetings, and I say the same thing. And, you know, because you're supposed to be able to comment. But it almost seems like those things are already decided and done, even, you know? You go there and talk and talk. And then, of course, at those same meetings are Trout Unlimited and all the people from Missoula. They must be trust fund babies, because they're not worried about any of the economic downside of it. They got their income, they don't care about the people down here. They've got their fishing, they've got their hiking. I just wonder, I mean, there's 11 wilderness areas within a mile's drive of Missoula already. 11 sanctioned ones, not counting the ones that are proposed, which are in fact.
The upper end of that in Fish Creek has been a proposed, it's called the Great Burn. And that's been a proposed wilderness area for, since the 70s. And it's still only proposed, but it's still all locked up. And that was one reason, you talk about the dialogue with the state and Plumcrick. That was one reason that we opted for the state, they gave us a choice. And Plumcrick sold it to.
Nature Conservancy.
Nature Conservancy. And they said, do you want it to go private, you want it to go to the state, or you want it to go to the forces? Well, we didn't want any more Forest Service, so we thought, well, the obvious is the state. Not thinking that they weren't gonna let them hunt in there commercially. None of that works.
Well, because the state has owned property under the DNRC badge, which does still log in the school trust money. So the prior, previous commissioners thought, oh, well, you don't want to be Forest Service, we're locked out. Oh, and, you know, the state would be a good partner, because they seemed to, but now it's Fish Wildlife Park WMA, which is basically Forest Service.
And that piece that they just bought, the hole in the wall lodge sets up in there, and they've been trying to get electricity into them. And effectively, that last little 320 that they bought there shuts any chance of that off.
Yeah.
It's completely, you can't go around it anywhere.
And those little white in holdings with the yellow circles around those, are those off to the left there?
Yeah, those are like little, a lot of them are mining claims, patented mining claims.
I see, but there's no real access to them?
Some of them have, I mean, the Forest Service has to let the guys get in on their Forest Service road, but I don't know.
That's part of the fire plan. Within a half mile or a mile of ownership, that they assume special land treatment there for fire access. I thought that's what that was, Roman.
But I mean, but can people drive in there, like those patented mining claims?
Yeah.
They should still be able to get into them?
I think the miner, yeah, whoever owns that claim can.
One of the things was, is that when they were, when the state was trying to come up with the money to buy this land, they had to reach into different pockets. And some of the pockets were recreation, some of it were wilderness and stuff like that. So depending on who, whose bucket of money that came out of as to what pieces of purchase that they were gonna have. Well, it turned out Wilderness, or WMA Wildlife Management Area, that come out of Pittman-Robinson. And Pittman-Robinson says, you can't do nothing there. Okay? And so, and so that essentially gets locked up as another wilderness. And so that makes it, makes for a big challenge as to doing anything. One of the things that the commissioners asserted, as well as the people, was that all activity would be still allowed in there when they purchased it. Now they're starting to renege because of the constraints of what bucket of money did the money come out of. And so that's where, that's where we kind of get hogtied in the.
We appreciate you taking a little time, we just wanted to visit a little bit, hear what's on your mind, and introduce ourselves, because we had a chance to sit down before.
What time is your breakfast start?
9:30.
Yeah, it's 15 minutes or so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so they will, if it's alright, we'll just, we haven't formally introduced, so we won't do that. So Susan and I, our home is Bozeman. We've raised our four kids there, we've lived there since 1995. And I'm a techie, I'm electrical engineer by training, Susan's actually mechanical engineer. And we had this, we had this idea that we could, we could start a business that would create good high-wage jobs here in the state. And I have to say, when we first came to Bozeman, there were retail shops on Main Street that were boarded up, didn't have tenants. And we started in our home with no outside money. And over 15 years, we grew a business that had 1,100 employees. And the average wage was about $90,000 a year. About half of our employees were in Gallatin County. And that was a software business. We employed a lot of MSU and UM grads in that business. And it created prosperity in the valley. If you've been to Bozeman recently, you know, it's, there's a lot going on down there. There's no retail shops boarded up on Main Street anymore. In fact, last year, 40% of all the wage growth in the entire state occurred in Gallatin County. There was a $104 million increase in wages last year alone. And the cool thing, I think, is that of that $104 million increase, $27 million of the increase was in construction wages. Because when you bring a high-wage job into a community, the first thing that family does is go build or buy a house. You know, and that creates jobs for tradespeople. And it's just, it's a virtuous cycle, and it's really a good thing. So right now, technologies was the name of that business. We hired, Steve Daines came into our business when we were about 100 people. We worked together side by side for 12 years, I have a lot of respect for Steve. I appreciate he's back serving us in Washington now in the senate. But in a certain sense, we, Oracle purchased that business, and it was interesting. We had given our employees equity, stock ownership in the business. And we went public, we were publicly traded on Wall Street for eight years. And then Oracle purchased it in 2012. And just the residual stock options that our employees had after eight years of being public, because they could've sold any of it, caused countywide payroll to jump 14% in 2012 when Oracle purchased the business. And now, a bunch of them have spun out and started other businesses. And we have one young man who is a seed potato farmer out of Dillon. And he went back home after working for us for nine years, started a business down in Dillon. He now has 40 employees in the state, averaging $60,000 to $70,000 a year. And he just rented the old Marianus building, which is the old elementary school in Dillon. And his office is in a classroom where he, his dad, his uncles, and his granddads all went to kindergarten. And they're hiring kids out of Western and doing that. So I think that.
Is this the Lawrence Morris?
It's a different guy, that's a guy, actually, he wasn't from Montana, but he had the good fortune to marry a gal from Dillon. And they were living down in Silicon Valley. And they had a couple kids, and he was commuting, you know, an hour and a half each way to just go 10 miles. Like, it's just concrete jungle down there.
Oh, yeah.
It's sunny, but concrete.
Yeah, it's warm and sunny, but you can't get anywhere. And she finally put her foot down and said, we're going home. And he went to his boss in Silicon Valley and said, could I work from Dillon? His boss said, yeah. So he brought his Silicon Valley salary to Dillon. They bought a home there, grandparents are down the street, put the family back together. And now he has to fly down to the Bay Area maybe once every six, eight weeks, something like that. But most of the time, he works out of Dillon. And this represents an opportunity. Susan and I, in June, we were here in Superior, visited, we visited 60 communities all over the state. Every single community we were in, we found people that were working remotely for national companies. It used to be that if you wanted to find a job in Superior, you had to find an employer in Superior. Well, the internet kind of changes that. And I think this is one of the biggest opportunities we have to bring some vibrancy back into our communities by getting our young people that have moved away to come home and bring a job with them. And that's what that telecommuting guide is all about. It's not the solution, but it's part of the solution. I think we also, as, you know, we were talking earlier, Duane, you know, we've got to figure out how to manage our forests so that our mills can get back to full work. And, you know, I've, those are mostly federal issues, less state issues. The state does a pretty good job managing the state lands. But we need to get more state control over the federal lands so that we can manage them and not have a barbecue every summer.
Right.
And it's a problem, as you know, is the litigation. I had a chance to meet with the logging association. Keith Olson had me come in in Pulsar, and I had a chance to talk to all the loggers there back in June or something, so. But I was mentioning, there'll be an announcement later today out of Helena about some action the Attorney General's taking against the EPA. And I'm very encouraging of that. I just, I think the number one, although I'm a techie, I think the number one opportunity we have in the state is natural resources. And we are, we did, I did file exploratory to run for governor in Montana. And that's part of the reason why I'm out visiting with folks, just to understand what the local issues are, to make ourselves known. For me, Montana's our home, we raised our family here, we love Montana. We see it has so much potential that has just been, you know, under-realized. And you look at all that, you know, the quality of life you have here, and the awesome beauty, but we can't eat the scenery. And I'm a business guy, not a politician, I've never run for office. And I just think there's an opportunity to bring some business experience to Helena, and to kind of peel back some of these regulations, the oversight, the lack of understanding of how economics actually works. To get, to get some agency heads that have actually walked in the shoes of the people they're serving. I personally would like to see a landowner in charge of DNRC. You know, and I think that would make a big difference in how the permitting process. Because we have good people that work at DNRC and DEQ. But they're led by people that have grown up inside the government. And we have a, we have a current administration that grew up inside the government. They're not, they don't have day jobs like the rest of us, you know, and they just don't understand. And so, I had a, I had a experience in Bozeman recently, and it was a, I was the, there was a homecoming parade about three weeks ago. And I was walking down the street, visiting with some folks. This guy comes up to me, and he was a little crunchy, you know, a little granola type. And he had a backpack on, and he had a little two-year-old in the backpack. He had one of these little firecracker, like ponytail sticking up, a toe head, really cute little thing. And he comes up and he goes, are you Greg Gianforte? I said, yes. He goes, well, I work for the government. And I'm thinking, okay, here it comes. And he said, I want you to know that I so much appreciate your work you're doing to create jobs here in the state. Because I want my little girl to get a job when she graduates, and I don't want her to leave. And he shook my hand, he says, I'm on your side. And he walked off. This, we're finding this message of, you know, basic economics, that we can create higher-wage jobs here. We just put our heads together, work on it, just apply a little common sense and elbow grease, and an understanding of how economics works, so that we can have a vibrant private sector. Let's use the assets we have in our communities, and let's stop exporting our kids. That's really the thing that's driving us. So I just want a chance to visit with you, introduce ourselves, and answer any questions you have.
I think I have a question.
I don't think so either, I'm rather intrigued with the technology aspect, because we do have, I think Roman mentioned it, we do have a fiber optic buried in the old Milwaukee line that seems to be untapped. I guess it's big bucks to tap it, but, you know, we got a lot of stuff there forever. Never use it, I don't know.
In other communities that have done that, you need to find a local ISP, a local internet service provider, who can buy access and then make it available in the community. And most, it's interesting, like up on Highline, Chinook, Malta, Fort Benton, White Sulphur Springs, all have one gigabit fiber to every home now. And that work was not done by the large telecommunications firms. Most of that was done by Triangle or Mid Rivers. So I, as county commissioners, I would encourage you to work with your local telephone co-op.
Blackfoot, yeah.
Blackfoot, you know, Blackfoot's providing free access at Montech in Missoula. So they have an interest in helping communities thrive. And honestly, it's in their best interest, if they provide local access in a way that's useful to do remote work, they're gonna sell more subscriptions. So it's a, it's a win-win for them, but they may have to pony up a little bit to get started. Some of the firms are easier to work with than others. And I would encourage you to explore that. And that's one thing I would want, I mean, I also think, you know, maybe a little more cellphone coverage in the state would be a good thing.
Yeah, we've often talked about that. $29.95, you can buy a satellite TV and get TV from China. You pay $100, you pay $130 a month for cellphone service, and you drive up the highway here and you lose coverage.
Yeah.
Doesn't make any sense to me.
Right, well, we could do better.
Yeah.
So my, again, I'm just, I'm a business guy, and we love Montana. We'd like to see better economic outcomes for people, so our kids don't leave. And I had a chance to attend the Mako conference with Harold Blatty here a little while back, I don't know if you gentlemen.
Oh, yeah, we know Harold.
Yeah, and we had, I've had a chance to visit with him. I just think, the more decisions we can make locally, the better. And I think the state has a strong responsibility in helping with infrastructure. Not that, not that Kim write a blank check, because there's got to be community support as well, but we just haven't gotten infrastructure done in the last couple of sessions. Awful lot of work right now ends up in the wastepaper basket in the governor's office. He's proud of the fact he's eaten more bills than Schweitzer did. And I just think that's directionally incorrect. We've got too many citizen legislators coming in, doing hard work, and then it gets thrown in the trash can. I'd like to have a more collaborative approach. I appreciate your time.
Yeah, good luck over meeting the other folks over there.
Thanks, yeah, and we're happy to be your expert.
Did Wayne get one of these?
I don't know. Okay, very good.
Can you guys patch them down there to them?
Yep.
She's putting her knee down with both eyes.
Somebody can have mine, and I'll just run off of Stacy's.
That's fine. Stacy can grab a letter.
Okay, I am not ready.
That's a safety device.
Oh.
HR on the.
Here's, here's a toilet seat.
Oh, hey.
Yeah.
Just a second, let me.
The red one?
Yeah, yes, thanks.
I will do that.
You are welcome.
There's, this is Mako's. I guess this is the, this is Mako's model policy. Job description. So I mean, there's a whole lot of safety work, because we're not gonna have any staff. So so you have to.
Yeah, obviously, but, yeah.
So, human resource proposal.
Yeah.
What's the proposal?
So what you guys have in front of you is just model job descriptions from Mako. It would, of course, have to be tweaked to fit our.
Needs.
Needs a little bit better, and I think, I'm gonna break it. Together with Stacy and Marcia and input from the commissioners, you know, we can, we could tweak it. But the proposal would be to 10 hours a week, minimum wage.
Minimum being starting wage, I'm assuming, not minimum.
Yeah, yeah, minimum starting, yeah. Just to help sort of get some policies and procedures in place to help employees, to help with the safety.
Program.
Program.
Have another person that can go to training that's gonna comprehend some of the stuff to help bounce ideas off. Because, I mean, I would still go, she can still, you know, she can go.
Stacy and I would work together in conjunction, because there's still, I mean, the files are still gonna be remaining in her office. There's, you know, there's different things that we would be doing together. And so I, you know, we just, I see a need here of wanting to help the community and the employees that work here. You guys, we have phenomenal employees that work here, and, you know, we, I think if we had somebody that we can all kind of go to and talk things out and work out things, we, it would be a better atmosphere. On the safety specialist, that's important for our insurance. You know, you guys pay out a lot of claims that maybe, maybe not, but could have been helped.
Having another person that can possibly get away to go to some of these trainings, because some of them don't fall at opportune times, for like, because some are around election times or around a payroll week, and I won't be able to necessarily go to every one of them. But we, if we don't start having representation of some of these, we're gonna start losing out on some of those credits that we can get back. You know?
And I, I guess I would, oh, I don't.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Um, I guess I would just say I'm looking over this, the job description, this human resources job description, and it occurs to me as I look at it that so much of the items that are listed in this document are non-legal situations where my office ends up taking the lead on those things now. We spend a whole lot of time on stuff that really isn't.
Because we don't have a special.
Exactly.
Haven't reached your level yet.
Well, the legal stuff is on me, but I end up dealing with questions that really aren't legal in nature in terms of FMLA stuff, you know, just different things that.
Before, it should have to get to her.
A human resource designated position would lighten a little bit of that load. When something happens in some department where we have a personnel issue, you know, there have been times that I have spent three or four days out of my week exclusively dealing with that department head and working on those things. And I think it would be very helpful, from my perspective, to have somebody who could be an intermediary between the department, the department head, and the level that we get to when they're, when they get to a legal, they need a legal opinion about something. One of the things that I also wanted to say about this, I was looking at this development and overseeing recruitment and selection strategies. We have had so little uniformity between departments in terms of our hiring, and it would be nice to have a central. And that's something, frankly, I think we all spend a lot of time on, that a human resources person could assist us with. You know, when I fill a position in my office, we take that, we take in the applications, we make determinations about who's going to be interviewed, we put our interview panel together, we do all that. And I think that if we had. But one other thing that I wanted to mention, just again, looking through this job description, one of the things that we've always struggled with historically is our grievance procedure. And I say that because oftentimes, I or you, as the commissioners, will be approached directly by an employee who has an issue. And that's problematic for a number of reasons. One, I'm the county's legal counsel. It's my job to represent whatever department may be involved in that. It is not my job to represent the individual employee. And dealing with those issues on that level would create a conflict of interest for me. With regard to the commissioners, and we've talked about this before, ultimately, the way our grievance procedure is set up is you are the ultimate finders of fact, if it gets to step three of the procedure. And it is also inappropriate for individual employees to approach you, or department heads for that matter, to approach you prior to that, getting to that level in the grievance procedure. And I think having someone who could be that point person, maybe help mediate issues between employees and department heads before they get to the point of there being legal involvement or, you know, an actual hearing before the commissioners. And I think, you know, we've managed it fairly well, but it is always problematic. And I think that this would make a lot of sense in terms of eliminating those potential issues.
We really, a situation that came up two weeks ago, there was an employee terminated, which was before their probationary period was up. However, we've been told in no uncertain terms, if we do not contact Mako regarding termination of an employee before it happens, then they may or may not back us and, you know, provide the assistance if, you know, if their choice. Because if we contact them and they give us advice, and then we, it turns out we were wrong, then they're, you know, they're in it with us. But this way, they're like, hey, we don't have to, we don't have to provide you with anything. But so this particular person, I didn't even find out about this termination until payroll was almost finished. When you terminate somebody, you basically are to walk up to them and hand them their paycheck at the same time that you give them their separation papers, no grievance policy, you know, I was not told anything. If this individual decides to sue us, we're, I mean, we're, because legally, don't we have 72 hours?
If I look, my recollection from looking at the earlier of payroll or.
Yeah. Okay, and that's, but payroll was a week and a half away, you know, when this happened. So I just, little things like that to help make sure that everybody's.
Everybody understands what the requirements, the expectations, our obligations are, because that is something that I don't, honestly, I don't know. Normally, there's very little discussion when an employee is terminated prior to the expiration of their employment period. And I was generally aware that there was something going on, but I wasn't aware that the person had been terminated or anything like that. And so it would be very helpful to have someone who could work with various departments in that capacity, just to make sure that we're uniform and consistent in our application of the law and of county policy, and that we're doing things appropriately, so that we don't end up in a situation where we have, you know, made some error that's going to be detrimental to the county.
Because that liability insurance is big. You know, and if they choose, hey, you didn't check with us, we're not going to cover you, we're kind of, that will hurt from the fiscal side, I know how, anyway. So now you're aware of that one, too.
Well, and on the safety part of it, you know, we had the insurance company come in, what, two weeks ago, and say that they're starting to come around and doing audits on counties' safety procedures. And if we get audited, what is that going to mean? You know, the commissioners need to have an overall picture of what that means, and I don't think you guys right now do.
It's always kind of been one of those things that, it's an office building, safety, you know, really, but they're starting to get really serious about it. And Casey and Kelly, we had a, we had a real good program, they, you know, we got the, I don't know, the monthly safety topics.
Minimum requirement.
Yeah, and that's what we did. We basically stuck to the minimum, and hopefully, somebody could go to the trainings or whatever to get us some of those extra credits, but it didn't always happen. And for the last, since Casey left, for sure, nothing's been done. So, because we just haven't had time. But I think it would help to have another outside person to.
We did receive our packets, you know, those envelope packets where you, if you have an accident or something happens, you fill it out. And I got those to the police for their cars, but the box is now just sitting in there waiting for somebody else to be able, because you can't just distribute them.
No, yeah.
You have some kind of a.
They have to have some sort of a checklist, a proof, a signature, something saying that they're acknowledging that they received them, you know?
I thought they were important enough to go ahead and get them in the cars. That's all I had to do was get them in.
At least, right. Road department probably should.
So currently, right now, I'm working 10 hours on, five hours on the DFC grant, five hours on the county's grants. The ultimate goal is to hand that over to your.
Finance.
Finance person that will help pay for a little bit of her salaries, whoever he or she is. And so that, I wouldn't be doing that anymore. And it really does lie with your financial person. And so I have time to do it. I'm willing to do it for minimum wage, because I know.
We're broke.
I know where we are. And I still work for the grant. I still work under my CVA grant at 20 hours a week, and I still get my health insurance paid for from another source. So it's, other than the, Stacy and I figured it out, it's a little over $4,000 a year at 10 hours a week. And the insurance portions of it, I think it's, would say, would pay for itself.
Well, just the credits alone.
I agree.
Even just meeting the minimum of our credits, we still received almost $2,000 back from Mako. I mean, that alone is going to help offset that cost there for the safety part of it, you know? But.
And that would be better if you.
And it will get better as more, as more of the criteria is met. We'll get more of that money back. And then, you know, and then what we had kind of, when we were originally doing the whole thing, we kind of were starting to look at little, you know, little water bottle incentive, you know, stuff. Because that's ultimately what that money that comes back to us is supposed to go for, is to, little incentives, you know, a gift card, or, you know, something for quarterly drawings, or I don't know, you know, there's all sorts of options out there, but.
And even just the appreciation of somebody that can, you know, send out a card to your employees that says thank you for your, for your work, or, you know, to your department heads, or, you know, a little bit of appreciation goes a really long ways. And we live in Mineral County, we don't get paid hardly nothing to work here, and yet we are all here every day, doing the very best that we can. So, you know, that would be another aspect of it, is giving back to our employees. And, you know, I would envision this, that this position would be underneath the commissioners, just because you guys need to be the ones that are overseeing. I think both of these.
Well, no, and HR, that's technically, HR lies with them. It just happens to fall that everything's in our office. But that's, I would not be her boss by any means, but she could work with me to help.
So currently, 20 hours a week are the CVA grant?
Yeah.
And then five for DFC and five for, what's the county grant you were talking about?
All the grants that I've been trying to get in order with the Health Department.
Oh, okay. And where's your other 10 hours come from? Or are you only 30 hours currently?
You know, I work around 20 or 30 hours, depending on our caseload up in Marcia's office, but my other hours come from Choices.
Oh, okay.
And the Conservation District. And the Conservation District are the ones who pay my insurance.
Oh, okay. So you foresee 10 hours a week, kind of splitting the safety and HR?
Mm-hmm.
And so, say, a month where we have no HR problems, you'll just dedicate more to the, whatever safety needs to be done?
Yep, yep. And I think, you know, monthly check-ins with you guys to say, this is where we are, you know, I think the first thing that we need to do is get our policies and procedures updated.
I will be so happy to hand that over to you.
And that's, that's going to be huge, because once we have all that actually in writing and updated. Because there's so many issues that right now, I mean, we know how we're supposed to handle it, but then, well, what's your policy say?
Right.
Crap, because we haven't updated it. We talked about it 500 times, and this specific thing has come up before, but it's not in writing.
It's never been, yeah.
So we have to revert back to what's in writing, because that's currently what we're handing out.
Yeah, and since the, this, our current policy was actually prepared, I believe, adopted in about 2002.
That's.
Laws have, the laws have been updated and have changed, and there are sections of our current policy which are no longer consistent, I guess, with.
That's a good word. But I just, that would be huge.
And that I can think is that 10 hours a week is not enough. I think it's going to be 10 hours a week.
That's a starting point, though.
A Band-Aid, a Band-Aid fix.
But it's.
And so you're going to be right back to where we are right now. Yeah, you're going to get your employee policy done, but there's a lot more to HR than just the stuff that's right here.
But she's just to help me and my office. It's not that it's all on her.
But I just think that if you're looking at an HR person, look at an HR person and do it right.
I think, you know, I think, I understand what you're saying. But I think that right now, with the current budget situation that we're in, and the fact that.
There's no way.
There's so many other cuts going on across the county, I think that that's all that we can afford right now. And I think every, every six months, we should reevaluate and say, where are we on this? And what do we perceive that needs to be different?
I agree. And I, and I just think that HR can either make or break it. And if you do a good job at HR, it's going to make it, and you're going to have an awesome place to work in. If you do it haphazardly, it's going to get you into more trouble than what you're already in.
I agree.
I guess that's where I'm agreeing from.
With having the added help, in all honesty, it can only get better from here.
Absolutely. Because as it is right now, I juggle so much of that myself, and I don't.
I know.
It's non-legal stuff, but there's no one else to do it, and so it falls to me.
Right.
And I think having that, having a person dedicated to those kinds of things will only improve what.
It's still not going to be perfect, and I don't think that's.
Well, and I don't think that the commissioners should be so straight on the 10 hours, that if I come to you and say, hey, there's this issue, and it's Wednesday, and I've already spent 10 hours, you know, is it okay if I have five more? Or, you know, and that's, you know, I, I think I can do it in 10, but I say, let's reevaluate and see where we are in a few months.
And I don't think it's so much a 10 a week that is important. I think it's the.
Overall number.
I think it's the, okay, you're allotted 520 a year, you know, okay, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Because some weeks, you might not have to do anything.
Right.
And some weeks, that might be all you do, you know, it just depends.
I think it's a good starting point. I mean, I'm.
And it certainly can't, like, I mean, it can't, it's not going to be perfect, but it's going to be an improvement. It's going to, it's another person I can bounce stuff off that I can rely on, somebody else helping learn this stuff. Because I can't train two brand-new employees, get caught up from where we're at right now, do elections, and.
It would be great to have a full-time HR person.
Oh, it would be huge, but we can't.
But unless, unless the people of this county decide that we're going to raise some taxes, and I don't think that's going to happen overnight.
I don't think it's even a thing we can even ask them to do at this point.
Something's got to give somewhere, because y'all seem, what we went through with this budget and.
It's a start.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree.
It's a good start.
And she's not asking for 20, 30 bucks an hour, which is what an HR person truly is worth. I mean, if that's all they're doing, and that's what they're trained to do, that's their expensive, it's kind of like your finance person.
I have a question. If the commissioners approve this, and it go, and it's under the commissioners, do you just add it to their budget page, or does it, does it get another budget page to?
It would just fall under theirs, probably.
It would be.
It could possibly have its own account number, but I don't even know that that would be necessary. We can, I mean, that would kind of be the finance person's problem.
Ah.
So I'm really looking forward to that part, because I can actually focus on the parts of my job, so.
Pay down there, but.
There was something else I was going to say, and it was important, but it went away. Oh, and like she said, these are just a model. They're obviously going to have to be.
Yep.
Tweak, didn't you?
Tweak to make it fit our situation, because, you know.
Any other comments from people, Mary, Tim, Dale, questions?
Comments?
Do you think it's realistic that you could find somebody that would be, has these knowledge, skills, and abilities, that's willing to work 10 hours a week?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's the next thing, is this something we'd have to advertise?
Well, it sounds like what you're looking at is a temporary-type position with the option of revisiting it down the road. And what I would suggest is creating a temporary position at the end of whatever, you have up to a year to determine whether that would, you would make that into a permanent position. And at that time, at the time it becomes a permanent position, then you would advertise it, and people will go through the competitive hiring process.
And would it have to be a year, or could we set it ahead to kind of match the budget?
It is, yes, you can set it ahead.
It can't be more than a year.
It can't be more than a year.
Yep, you could, you could revisit this at the next, during the next budget.
Budget cycle.
Yep. And decide how you want to move forward, if you want to move forward. And if you do decide to make this a permanent position, then you need to advertise it, and you need to go through the competitive hiring process in order to make that happen.
The competitive hiring process at 8:15 hours.
For 10 hours a week.
Hey, I didn't say it. That was you, Roman.
I know.
I'm going to remember that, though.
Is it recorded?
We're recording.
I decided to add a little levity here. Or is the word brevity, I would say?
It's levity, but I don't think it's about funny.
It's funny in a really sad way.
Carol Young would say she's introducing some levity in her brevity. That's what Carol Young says all the time.
Who says?
Carol Young.
Oh.
That's what she says at board meetings. So, anyway.
Well, with all that being said, Roman, I make a motion that we assign Charlie Thompson the part-time position.
Temporary. I would say temporary, part-time.
Quarter time.
Of HR and safety person, director, person, whatever.
HR and slash safety?
Coordinator.
Coordinator? For what period of time would you want to add on that?
Well, I think.
To revisit at the next budget cycle.
Yeah, at the next budget cycle, yeah.
That gives you a good amount of time to see what it saves and what, where we are, and.
I wouldn't be surprised if down the road, that the safety specialist wouldn't pay for a good part of it.
With the same.
Yeah, with the same.
Credits.
I agree, yeah.
Well, yeah, because, I mean, I think one check was, I want to say it was close to $1,500 this year between the two, and we did a minimal amount.
Carol Young would say she's introducing some levity in her brevity. That's what Carol Young says all the time.
Who says?
Carol Young.
Oh.
That's what she says at our board meetings.
So, anyway.
Well, with all that being said, Roman, I make a motion that we assign Charlie Thompson the part-time position.
Temporary.
I would say temporary, part-time.
Quarter time.
Of HR and safety person, director, person, whatever.
HR and slash safety.
Coordinator.
Coordinator. For what period of time would you wanna add on that?
Well, I think.
To revisit at the next budget cycle?
Yeah, at the next budget cycle, yeah.
That gives you a good amount of time to see what it saves and what's, where we are and.
I wouldn't be surprised if down the road, that the safety specialist wouldn't pay for a good part of it.
With the saving.
Yeah, with the saving.
I agree, yeah.
Well, yeah, cause I mean, I think one check was, I wanna say it was close to $1,500 this year between the two. And we did a minimal amount the last 12 months, you know, with.
When I was working for the helicopter, they always had a, of course, logging is very
Right.
dangerous and per comp rates are very high. But just before I quit working for them, they got really active in their safety program. And their initial policy was that they were going to award a pickup to one individual. Well, it ended up at the end of the time, it was a chainsaw, but it was still an $800 award. You know what I mean? That was the kind of money. The pickup disappeared, everybody forgot about them.
Yeah.
I happened to be the one that won the chainsaw.
Oh, good job. So that, so the next thing is.
Was it an Echo or a Poohland?
No.
All right.
So the other thing is, since, yeah, she's gone. Mrs. Patterson is gone, you know, I just wanna remind everybody that she's retiring this year. And she's worked for this county for over 20 years.
She started 17, I think.
17 years. So we should probably get her a plaque or something from the county for all her years of service and putting up with all of you.
Yeah. And on that note, Kevin Chamberlain, I would check with him too, cause he's pretty good about stuff like that. So he may have something in the works. She is retiring December 20, 20?
20th, I think, cause it's first.
I thought she said it was a couple of days. It's a Monday.
I thought it was 18th, that's a Friday.
So it's the 18th. She was going to take vacation, but that would put her into being paid in January. And she can't or it messes up her retirement. So I think the 18th will be her last day.
Yeah.
And I won't be here that day, cause I have to have surgery.
But I think part of your HR is just to remind you guys of those things so that we're, we're not missing the mark on our employees.
Important things, yeah.
So y'all, you wanna reread back the motion you've got typed?
Y'all, no laughing. Dewan Savins made a motion to assign Charlie Thompson the temporary quarter-time human resource slash safety coordinator position to be revisited in one year at 10 hours per week for $8.50 per hour.
Instead of one year put at the next budget cycle.
Yeah.
Please.
A year, we would be ousted. We don't want that.
You know that stupid attorney letter that I have to give you every year for all that stuff?
Subject to a six-month probationary.
You say that there's no termination. I've already done two of those.
Yeah, I think all of our, yeah.
For 13, 14? I don't know. Okay.
Yes.
It's easy to do, but I can't do it today.
No, that's not.
Any job I guess we have here.
Forget that I need to get. Sorry.
Tim has a legal question. Restate, Tim.
I'm a legal question. It's just a function that everybody else has to operate under these conditions under our current personnel policy is that there's an evaluation of employees and there's a termination without cause for six months and all of that. So does it still stand for this position?
Sure.
I believe so.
I wouldn't.
Who's gonna do the evaluation?
Mako is actually recommending against doing evaluations unless they're being done uniformly for all employees. So that is another person that, another project that the HR person is going to have to deal with. But as far as evaluations go, it seems to me that they, this person answers to the commissioners and as their supervisors, they would do her evaluation.
We do.
Okay, I'll second it.
That's good, cause she's going to training next month.
All in favor of Commissioner Simons' motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
When is that?
I thought you guys couldn't.
The 17th of November.
I thought you guys couldn't pass motions without at least three people.
No, two is a.
Two is a quorum.
Two out of three.
Yeah.
And Roman can second the motion because they don't.
We don't like to, you know? But we have discussed this with Lori before too. It's not like she dodges it.
Not a new topic.
No.
It's come up many, many times over the, over the years.
Yeah, kinda like the finance thing. It'd be really, really nice to be able to have a full-time department, but it just doesn't, it's not feasible.
I gotta go to Missoula for a meeting, so.